Father, we give you thanks for that. As we go forward, may all the decisions we make be for the betterment of our citizens, for our county. God, that this might be the best place where we can raise our families and do business and play. All of this, I pray in the mighty name of Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford. Sheriff Cassidy, would you lead us in the places?
Ladies and gentlemen, I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under our guard, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Looks like we have to close it up tonight. No heads in lieu from you, since we have the first meeting of the county commission without the baffles between our members. Appreciate the audience being here with us tonight. I still have ten or two dozen people I'll miss somebody for sure, so just accept our appreciation for coming to our haunted meeting. If I can all the commissioners are in your seats, Madam Clerk, would you take the robe? Please check in if you will. Has everybody checked in? Okay, we have a couple of members of the notified saying they'll be late, and we'll add them to the robes as they arrive. Madam Clerk, would you take the robe?
Twenty-one present, three absent.
Thank you. Next out, one of our good guest speaker confirmation, recognition, and presentations. We're happy to have with us tonight our Director of Tourism and Archives, Sheila Hunt. Sheila, we have you queued up early tonight, so if you're ready to make your presentation, we will recess for that presentation, and she will bring us up to date on things happening in our archives.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Commissioners. I appreciate the support that you all have given our department. I'm not used to this, so forgive me for moving it. I appreciate more than you know everything that you all have done for the Department of Archives and Tourism over the years. And tonight, I thought what I would do is just give you a little mini-update insofar as the Archives part of our department, where we've been, where we're going. Now, this is not going to be a long presentation. It's a few bullet points that are going to be on the screen, and I appreciate your attention to that for just a minute. I'll try to keep it very brief. Just to tell you a little bit about the Archives, and you all already know this, I'm sure, we're the official repository for the county and the main research facility for county governmental records, and we operate under Tennessee state law and the Sullivan County Public Records Commission. Next line, please. The Public Records Commission, you will hear us talk a lot about this from time to time. They are the motherboard, if you will, of the Archives in addition to this governing body here. They are mandated by Tennessee code to provide for the orderly disposition of public records created by agencies of county government, and so we try to do everything we can to comply with that and to bring the records to the general public in an orderly fashion. The Records Commission is appointed by the county mayor, of course, Mayor Venable in this case, and the head of the commission is Judge E.G. Moody. I should have put his name on there. He is not able to be with us tonight, therefore I'm bringing you just a little bit of information about the Archives. A member of the county legislative body, which in this case is Commissioner Joyce Crosswhite, a genealogist, our county historian, a county clerk, and a county archivist, and then other members may be appointed or assigned to the commission either by the mayor or by the chairman of the commission. So that's our governing board. And just to give you a very brief history, and I'm not going to go into a long spiel, but in 1995, the State of Tennessee mandated that every county revitalize, if they did not already have one, a public records commission. We did a study, and this was before I ever came to work here. I never had any thoughts that I might work for Sullivan County, and I considered it a very great honor. But we worked for nine years to assess the records, to make maps, and to plan for what we hoped was a really good county archives. And under the auspices of Mayor Venable, in 2004, the Sullivan County Archives was formally established. In 2006, and again, I'm skipping a lot because I don't want to belabor you all with some of the fine details that many of you may already be aware of, in 2006, we passed, you all passed a resolution of the county commission at that time, to authorize us to use Sullivan House, Sullivan operations, as a temporary storage, and that was supposed to be for six months, and fifteen years later, we're still there, and we're bursting at the seams. So that's kind of where we are with that. In 2011, we had a grand jury visit our department and all of our off-site storage spaces, storage facilities, and they cited several problems that we had, and one which was space, another was the concerns with humidity and insects and that kind of thing. In 2017, the Archives records fee was passed, and we're very grateful to the commission for passing that because that's going to help us move along in a much faster manner in getting the records ready for the general public. In 2019, the Public Records Commission sat up and took notice that we have some problems with our records. It's not in how we've already processed them, it's because we don't have room that we need, we don't have enough staff, and just several things. And so for the last year and a half, we've been working with the Public Records Commission to ascertain really what we need. And in 2021, I want to thank you all, and you passed a resolution earlier this year to purchase a lot for the county archives. I really appreciate that. I think that's a major step forward, and I'll thank you as well on behalf of the Public Records Commission. Next line, please. Quick facts, I just want to share this with you because oftentimes I'm asked these very specific things, and there's only five bullet points on here. I might have three pages of questions, Q and A, but these are the five that were continually asked. Tennessee code annotated requires us to preserve and provide public access, and we must do that in a timely fashion. We are required to keep the original documents. A lot of people say, can you have to keep scanned, can you keep scanned images and throw away the originals? You cannot. Under Tennessee law, we're required to keep the originals. And of course, our goal, our task, is to scan those documents in order to retire them from the general public handling in order to preserve them, you know, make those available for a longer period of time. Archives versus storage, I wanted to bring that out tonight. Archives is totally different than storage records. A lot of people think that if we're talking about archives for the county, that we're talking about storage records for my department or other departments, and that's not the case. They're two different animals. Archival records are vetted, actually vetted by the Records Commission and by the state and in conjunction with the C T A S manual. So everything that we have already in our storage and in our Archives facilities have been vetted, properly vetted, and the state has approved everything that we have there as of this date. We have to allow room as well for annual growth. We're a little bit different from most departments because we grow annually five to 10 percent each year. So we've really got a growth problem when we just start out at the beginning of each year. So that's something to keep in mind. Next slide, please. This is ideally where we would like to be. We'd like to have everything in acid-free folders, acid-free boxes. We're not quite there yet. We have many of our records there, but we also have some problems to go along with that. We have records overflow, as you all know. Right now, Sullivan operations is completely full, even through the holes. We have it in the bathrooms up there, in the closets, and everything imaginable, and these are not desirable conditions. We have a lot of records in old Holston School under Tommy, excuse me, Bobby Russell, and in our downtown office right now, you can't get through our main office in our research facility because of the boxes, so we're really hurting for space. We're also facing mold, mildew, and insects. Next slide, please. And you can see the water damage above. Now, let me hasten to say, when you see these next two, three slides, our county maintenance department has worked overtime to help us do everything we can to make this building what we need it to be for our county records, but they're fighting against all odds because the building is just, it's got a lot of problems. If you see the mold there and mildew, this is what we believe is inactive. It could be activated at any time. These spores could move very rapidly to other groups of records, and ideally what we should do is keep these isolated, but we don't have the room to do that. We have nowhere to put these records. We've got water in the floor, we've had many, many leaks over the years, and again, I have to pat maintenance on the back because they have worked overtime to correct these problems. Again, I want to thank you all for buying this beautiful lot. It's to the right there of the Triton Insurance Company. This is a major step forward in the right direction, and we really appreciate that. Next slide. And our current goal, this is the goal of the Records Commission, I'm speaking on behalf of the Records Commission tonight, are to acquire the services of an architectural firm to determine the final size of the building that we're in. You know, I can tell you that we have 4,400 linear feet of records already under the jurisdiction of the Sullivan County Archives, and that sounds like a lot, but we really don't know what that means in terms of building size. So we need an architect to help us determine that for the records that have already been processed. We have a lot of records out in various departments that need to be archived that have not come to us because we don't have the room, and then we've got to allow for annual growth of five to 10 percent. So that's basically all I wanted to share with you, and I believe you have a resolution in your packet, resolution number thirteen. I will be here. If you have questions, feel free to call upon me, or if you'd like to come over and visit at the office, I'd be happy to try to answer your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hunt. Well, when we get to thirteen, we'll, the members can have questions. Thanks so much. Very informative. Next up on our agenda, confirmations and appointments. Tonight, we have three, and I will, with your permission, read the order of Sullivan County Board of Equalization, Blount, Tennessee, order appointing a board member. Whereas Sullivan County Board of Equalizations, code five members, and those members are to be elected from different sections of the county department or county commissioners in April of even years. Those members deserve two-year terms. Whereas a vacancy has occurred on the Sullivan County Board of Equalization in June 1, 2020, and whereas, in accordance with TCA Code 67-1-401, if the county legislative body fails to elect a member of the Board of Equalization, the county mayor shall appoint the member to fill the vacancy. Whereas due to the timing of the training seminar for the members of the Board of Equalization is essential that the appointment be made at a time of the matter. Now, as I foreword, a judge decree by Sullivan County Mayor in his authority to appoint members in said Board of Equalization in accordance with TCA 67-1-401, that Charles Kelly Crosswhite is hereby appointed to serve a two-year term, expired May 31, 2024. Even though I can make that appointment, I would prefer the commission ratify that on record. And Mr. Crosswhite has attended training, attended his first meeting, and is working with property assessor's office. So if we have a motion to ratify the appointment of Mr. Crosswhite, Commissioner Garner, seconded by Crawford, Andrew and Andrew Crawford, and Commissioner Ackford, any discussion? We'll have this on a roll call vote by the clerk. If you agree with motion, signify saying yes. If you do not agree, you signify saying no. Madam Clerk? We weren't sure we were going to be able to get these things on the board, but Angie just told me we did. So when the board opens, cast your vote. And thank you, Bobby Runyon, you're somewhere out there. Has everyone voted? Anyone wish to change your vote? Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Twenty-three yes, one absent.
Mr. Crosswhite's appointment is confirmed on the Sullivan County Commission. Next is an order confirming appointments to the Sullivan County Library Board. Whereas Mr. Travis Smithson of 2439 E. Pity Road, Love City, Tennessee, has accepted a reappointment to the Sullivan County Library Board for an additional three-year term, July 21 through July 24. His present term expiring July 21. Whereas Jonathan Sellers of 2985 Highway 26, Blount, has accepted appointment to the Holston River Regional Library Board for a one-year term, July 21 through June 22, until the regional library board sunsets as per state law. His replacing Carrie Schwartz, who fulfilled both three-year terms as allowed by Tennessee law. So do we have a nomination to ratify the appointment? It's the library, Mr. Crawford, as active by Mr. Cross and Ms. Crosswhite. So when the board opens, we have a discussion. Sign off. When the board opens, cast your vote.
This is for both.
Has everyone voted?
We are voting for both.
You're saying too, let us turn on your microphone so you can tell me what you want. I can't do sign language.
I've got to push down. This is for both.
We're going to vote for both of them in one resolution, Sam, if that's, thank you for hollering. I guess we've got the board open and we can't turn on the mics. Ms. Yorge, we can't turn on the mic. We've got to go ahead and...
I'll just go.
Well, we're going to have to do it without a microphone if you have a question about the vote.
No, sir. I was just putting my, I was voting. I hadn't voted.
You have voted?
I have had.
Okay, we'll record you as a yes.
That's correct.
Thank you, ma'am, much. It just popped up there. Okay, has everyone voted? Anyone wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Twenty-three yes, one absent.
Having received necessarily majority, be it resolved, the county commissioner will reappoint Mr. Travis Smithson. Determine expiring June 24. Mr. Jonathan Sellers determined expiring June 22. I don't think we've got the board open anyway, but thank you. Okay, next up, we have a duty to serve out, no need for appointment as utility district commissioners, and I think this is a duty of the county mayor, but I always want to let the commission be informed of these assignments. This is an appointment to the Blue Valley District, utility district, Sullivan County, Tennessee. And I have appointed David Horton on the recommendation of his board, and he shall serve term with an expiration of July 31, 2021. I recommend this. I've told you that I hope commissioners will be involved in the appointment of these board members. I won't sign this appointment for two weeks. Sam, you're recognized.
If these appointments are in the courtroom, could we have them stand up and be recognized so we know who we voted for?
That's, yes, I'd be happy to. Are any of, Heather, are any of the appointments locked or are they there? Mr. Crosswhite, are you here tonight?
I am.
Kelly, would you stand up and introduce yourself to these people? You're probably not for forty years.
My name's Charles Kelly Crosswhite, married to Joyce Crosswhite.
Can you come to the microphone, sir?
All right.
Kelly, I was going to let you stay away, but since this is their courtroom.
You asked for this, Mayor, and how you going to get it? I wanted to sort of protest this job. I have a master's degree, and I found out I'm only making six dollars an hour. And I'm going to ask the mayor, I need at least a quarter more.
I'll take that under advisement.
Okay. And that's a joke. I am proud to serve the county of Sullivan on the Equalization Board. We've had two meetings so far, and it's been very interesting. And to tell you the truth, I'd probably do it for nothing. I'll pay for six dollars.
Well, go ahead.
I'm pretty much a Sullivan County resident for the last fifty years, I guess. Born and raised in Virginia, went to Damascus High School. I graduated from the college, actually years ago, not longer than I want to think that. I retired from Eastern Chemical Company, went to work for the great state of Tennessee. I was assistant administrator for the Health Department in the upper eight counties of the state. And after that, my wife said, you can't lay around a half second longer. Get out and find you a job. I went to work for Mountain State Health Alliance and worked three years. So that's everything I know about myself. Joyce can tell you a whole lot more.
Kelly, it's an honor to have somebody of your credentials and your character and integrity serving on that very important county board, because it's not an easy job and worth well more than six dollars an hour.
You're right, and it's been very interesting getting, and for the compliments, your checks and the money. Thank you, guys. I appreciate you.
Commissioner, if you want to do one more question, I think it was David.
No, I just have a question, Ms. Ute. So we're appointing Mr. Horton for one month.
Do we have the time over there?
July 31, 2021.
I certainly didn't mean to, and I just wanted to, no, I don't think that's correct. What I was about to say was that I won't sign this order for a couple of weeks, and by that, by doing that, I want the commission, the commissioners in that district who deal with their constituents to let me know if they have a problem, because you're the ones that gets calls on what service is, if it's race or service or whatever. So I will probably be signing this two weeks from today, giving you time to make a judgment or share your opinion with me. Thank you, David. We appreciate that. I believe that completes that item of the agenda. Next up is the approval of the commission minutes from previous meeting. Those have been sent to you electronically, and Mr. Crawford and Mr. Harper wrote and Ms. Summers. Second, Crawford, moving adoption. Can you put that on the board? When the board opens, cast your vote to approve minutes. Has everyone voted? Anyone wish to change their vote? Randy, we still have a mission. Okay, there it is. Anyone wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Twenty-three yes, one absent.
Madam Clerk, adopt it as published. Next up, the approval of another proposal. I will recognize our county clerk to review the list of applications. I will recognize our county courts review the list of applicants for no republics for Southern County.
Amber N. Banks, Jennifer Lynn Beard, Dylan Meyerlin, Kaylee Chandler, Anita Jane Chance, Paula Davis, Sean Shelby Dozier, Anna J. Dozier, Lisa A. Duncan, Rhonda Van Kleiner, Karen Jean Fox, Melody, Robin Fritz, Mackenzie Harrison Gale, Alicia Ringwell, Susan Ray Hammons, Terry Haywood, Lisa M. Hill, excuse me, Karen Levine Corin, James D. Horton, Jim Houston, Ella Annette Kane, Jessica M. King, Renee K. Clonick, Lori M. Lively, Kay Jeff Litke, Daphne M. Matthews, Ashley B. McDavid, Michelle Denise Morgan, Jessica Necessary, Amy J. Powalki, Heather Reimer, Alfred Rios, Amy N. Shumate, Rachel Sloper, Kristy Nicole Smith, Sarah R. Stout, Angela Renee Stewart, Forrest L. Stewart, Lisa Margaret Watson, Cindy L. Witten, Jim R. Williams, Sarah A. Willis. And we have one added at the last minute that may not be on your list, it's Jennifer Rae Vaughn.
You have heard the list, are there any objections to those seeking to be no republics in Southern County?
Motion to approve.
You don't have that one, okay, that's fine. The reason she's writing me notes is that when I hook in the system, I don't hear very well. So we may need to take a voice vote on that. We're kind of in bar. That's fine, no problem. So we have a motion to the list, Cross and Co., Cross moved to adoption, Co., you beat your to it, Martha Michael. We have a motion to approve the list, Madam Curran, take a vote on the motion.
Aker?
Yes.
Bylock?
Yes.
Bronson?
Yes.
Calton?
Yes.
Co?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Crosslight?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Glover?
Yes.
Harper Road?
Yes.
Hutton?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Leonard?
Yes.
Locke?
Yep.
Correll?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Stanley?
Yes.
Starnes?
Yes.
Sidum?
Yes.
Vance?
Yes.
Woods? Woods is absent. Would anyone like to change their vote? Twenty-three yes, one absent.
Having received necessary vote, the list as read is adopted. Mr. Aker, I've gone back to that nomination for the utility board and it is to fill out a term because of the death of a commissioner for that short period. These nominations are prepared by the utility commission, that's why I was a little bit thinking of act that we could maybe make a type of grant or... Okay, thank you. Next up is a public comment. Mr. Cross, we did not replace you in your absence although Commissioner George applied for the job and she performed admirably and I think it was close vote.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
As I do that, yeah, I screamed that last word. Under thank you. Okay, I'm going to assume these are not requests to speak on any resulting issue before the term expiration, so I will call the first Judy Stratton, Ms. Stratton? Is Ms. Stratton in the room? Well, we'll check and then move on and if she should re-enter the courtroom, I'll certainly recommend that we go on to the next person who signed up, Jason Barr. Mr. Barr, if you will come up as well. And you're not here for resulting, planning resulting issues, so if you will, introduce yourself and give us your name and address and for our electronic record, we generally afford our guests three minutes, but I'll let you finish your thought if we get close because you're recognized.
Jason Blair, two twenty, Hopps Hollow Road, Blountville, Tennessee.
I called you Barr, Mr. Blair, you're welcome. Go ahead and do, do the second one.
Yes.
He's here for something.
I'm sorry?
He is here for something.
Oh. I'm sorry, we'll hear you in just a minute when your case comes up before the commission, so I'm sorry, you didn't, we didn't have it checked. I'll call you back up, thank you. I don't have anybody else on the public comment signed up? Is there anybody that would like to entertain us for a few minutes? I'll ask one more time, anybody like to address the question for any reason? Well, the comment section is closed. And now, now Mr. Blair, we'll get on to the business of adding your business tonight. Mr. Gardner, you're recognized for motion on Resolution number one. Mr. Gardner moves adoption of item number one on tonight's resolution agenda, seconded by Ms. Calton. And Ms. Calton is really a sponsor of that and I can't get accustomed to that, darling, I apologize. Motion by Ms. Calton to, and seconded by Mr. Gardner to adopt item number one. Angie, do you have that on board? Angie? Do you have, do you have anyone have that on board? Item number one? No, we don't have it. All of those in favor of item number one signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All of those opposed, no. The ayes have it. Item number one is adopted. And I think that this order of business is recognized, Ms. Amber Torbit, in the well for the presentation of her application.
Yes. Mr. Blair's application. Thank you all so much. So in your zoning pocket, if you'll turn with me, you're a school teacher. Angie, do you have the slideshow, I mean, okay, if you don't mind, I'll click through it, it shouldn't be too much, I'd appreciate it. So we have two requests to come before you all tonight, the second one is a group application. The first is Mr. Blair's, both went to the Sullivan County Planning Commission. And so in your pocket, you'll have my staff reports and the usual maps. So the first request for Mr. Blair is to rezone his property from R-three, which is our mobile home park zoning classification, high-density residential, to A-one, back to A-one because, which is single-family residential in our low-density rural area. His request to rezone it to A-one is because it's no longer being used as a mobile home park. It was previously, if you click to the aerial map, ma'am, thank you. As you can see, there are no more mobile homes on this property. He built his new home a couple of years ago and to bring it into compliance, the A-one zoning has reduced setbacks, it doesn't have the thirty-foot all around like the mobile home park setbacks have. And it will afford him a larger detached garage. Mobile home park zoning, only the mobile home park landowner can have a detached garage. And so this, this will afford him everything else that everyone else has in that area. Click to the zoning map, please, if you don't mind, thank you. As you can see, we're only dealing with his property tonight, not the one next door, we might see that in the future. But this basically is to bring it to A-one in conformance with the surrounding land uses and surrounding zoning and afford him more use of his land. And it went to our planning commission last month, there was no opposition, it conforms with our land use plan and land use area. And so we bring this to you in a positive manner, request to you. And that's all I have.
You heard that motion, have any questions for Ms. Tor, or Mr. Blair who's here willing to, willing to talk with us? I see no questions, we're ready to vote on case number one. Board is open, we have a, comes to in a positive manner, from the planning commission. Has everyone voted? Mr. King, are you, oh, it just popped up there, thank you. Anyone wish to change their vote? Madam Curran, take the vote.
Twenty-three yes, one absent.
Having received necessary majority, case number one is approved. Mr. Blair, thank you for being here. Ms. Torbit?
All right, the second request is actually a group application. So in our zoning code, we allow neighbors to get together and petition their property to be rezoned for one application fee as long as they're requesting the same zoning classification and as long as they're adjacent. And so all the arrows point to the properties in question. So the property owners are Zeta Barnes, Timothy Barnes, Mary Cross and her estate, Robert Cross, trustee, and Jeffrey Rash. Alan Cross, I believe is the son of Ms. Cross, and he organized this. So I haven't been able to meet everyone because we did all of this electronically, but their request is to rezone the property from PMD-two back to A-one. And if you'll click to the zoning map. So as you can see, all the blue is PMD-two, those were zoned by the county several years ago. I suspect because of maybe proposed airport parkway or just growth around the industrial park on airport parkway, this is directly across from the runway at the airport. We've seen some of these requests come in last month and the previous month to take them back to farm zoning. In this case, they would like to actually go ahead and zone it R-one because they've had some requests and some, I guess, some interest in building homes on these sites, which that would be great for the county if we could have some new residential development. This has been used as farmland all this time or single-family farmhouse. So what you see in red, those are existing businesses. You would have the old Southern Building Supply, I think it's for sale. You have the, I think it's, is it Greystone Nursing Home, an apartment complex down that road. So obviously we want to keep those, that's not part of this application. But everything else with the blue, the arrows on the blue is being proposed to R-one, for single-family residential. Went to our planning commission last month, there was no opposition. And so they unanimously recommend to you in favor of this request.
Ms. Yorke, you have questions?
Amber, what is the green triangle in the middle of all this?
Yeah, that's just a parcel that got left, I think it might be owned by them, but it was never zoned PMD-two to begin with, so they're just going to leave it as is.
Amber?
Yeah.
I'm Alan Cross.
Yes, nice to see you.
That triangle is actually owned by Tri-City Airport.
Okay.
Is that a radio tower or something? So that is outside, this request does not include that because these people don't own it. I couldn't tell by my arrows, is that...
Yeah, so the arrows, right, it is a, it's its own parcel. Thank you, Amber.
Any other questions for Amber or beyond? Sign now, I believe we're ready to vote on case number two, so when the board opens, comes to you in a positive manner, cast your vote. Thank you ladies. Has everyone voted? Anyone wish to change? Madam Curran, take the vote.
Twenty-three yes, one absent.
Having received necessary, the case number two is approved, Ms. Torbit, do we have any official votes?
Not any else, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, we'll go back into session and they can, they can consider agenda that the work session during Thursday last, it's item three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven. We'd love to have a motion for adoption. Any discussion? Anyone want to talk anything off that you say you'd like to, feel like having anything to go on? Sign now, we're ready to vote, if you say you're ready, the board opens, please cast your vote. Before I say, do not move. Before we go back into the management.
Mayor?
Has anyone voted? Anyone wish to change their vote? Madam Curran, take the vote.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Twenty-three yes, one absent.
I apologize, I forgot part of my job, thank you, thank you for covering for me. Having received necessary, the consent agenda is adopted. And you will get the chairman just a minute to arrange his resolutions. I will, we will, we will, we will, we will, which I believe. Well then, I'm sorry, I'm busy looking at my resolutions, yes ma'am?
Mayor, your mic is really not on, we can't hear you on this side.
Oh, you can?
We can, we can't, we're having trouble, I mean, I think on what you're saying.
Maybe, maybe I need to move closer.
That's better. If you could just talk, say we couldn't hear what you were saying.
Okay, I apologize, I didn't realize that and I appreciate you calling my attention. I'll speak up, my wife accused me of mumbling a lot and I tell her I mumble only when I'm going to tell a lie. So I don't want to be accused of that here tonight, so, and if she's, if she happened to be watching in, she might call people. Okay, we're, next up is item number twelve. And Commissioner Glover, you're recognized on item number twelve. That's under all business and I skipped on Ms. Crosslight, you're recognized on, I guess, item number two.
Thank you, Mayor, you could, thank you, Mayor, you could have skipped over because I'm going to roll this over to July, please.
Without objection, roll to July. And now I think my file is correct up here, so I remember to have Mr. Glover after the... You're recognized on item number two.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, we've had a little problem on this side of the room here tonight. On my way into the building downstairs, I've kind of got sidetracked in something, somebody left down there, so Miss Downey got a whiff of it a very minute ago, so we'll try to work around that, Miss Downey, get out soon as we can.
My dog apologizes to me. I don't have, I don't have a dog, it hurt so bad.
I told the, I told the mayor about that and he said if he'd left it there, he'd put it at the top of the steps where I fell down the steps.
And I'll confess that to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, this resolution is the scheduled Sullivan County premier summit on regional...
on Regionalism with Sullivan County's mayors, legislative bodies around the table of enlightenment. On the issue to identify constructs of the regional hub working paper and its professional impact defining regional governance, this amendment shall establish optimum clarity by acknowledging that this will be real-time communication that represents manifest will of people. I'm not going to read unless you want me to read through the whole thing. Now therefore be resolved by the Sullivan County Board of Commissioners and some be, uh, be scheduled to present the factual and established outline of this ideology called regional hub. And for be further resolved, Sullivan County Mayor Richard Venable shall set time, date, and agenda for this summit of Sullivan County mayors and legislative bodies and open to the citizens within forty-five days after passage of this resolution. And, uh, last week I did get some questions and, uh, the question, two of the questions, if I had talked to the Bristol mayor and Kingsport mayor and the Love City mayor. Uh, Monday of this week, I did have a conversation with the Bristol mayor. And Bristol is, uh, on board and in support of this. They are very eager to, uh, to get some answers as we are. Talked to the mayor of Love City about this particular resolution. And, uh, she is, uh, is on board. She wants to, to meet and, uh, and gather some information also. I did get, not, I did not get to talk to Mayor Scholl from Kingsport, but I did send an email and got a reply from him that, uh, he was leaving it up to the vice mayor that serves on the commission to gather information and wait to see what her vote counts for and leave it up to the rest of the aldermen to, uh, to get back with him. But he said if this did pass and Mayor Venable invited him, that he would attend. He also went in to say that he was very concerned about the tax issue that he was wanting to know how to affect Kingsport. So let's hear that. But, uh, I think a lot of people is very interested in this. I know, I think there was a meeting last night in Greenville on this particular issue and some, uh, a vote took place there to move some things forward. This resolution is not demanding on all, this resolution is telling anyone what to do. This is an invite, if this resolution is passed by the mayor, for the hub group to come in or who the mayor invites to come in, or if it's just the mayor. And I think it should stay with the Sullivan County, uh, government as it states in the, uh, in the resolution. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
We have, uh, Commissioner Stidham who, Commissioner Stidham, uh,
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Commissioner Glover, uh, the one question I have about this, I think the, possibly the forty-five days after passage of this resolution may be, uh, a little, uh, a little tight to me. We're in July, uh, July is coming up. A lot of people on vacation. This is a large number of people we're asking to come here. Would you amend that possibly sixty or ninety days?
We'll do sixty days if that would help everyone. I know it's budget time and, and vacation time. And I think this schedule would be very flexible. I think if this passed, uh, within the sixty days and the mayor gets back to us on this, uh, I think we can all work around that. I, I would accept it, yes.
Thank you.
Without objection, the sponsor will accept amendment sixty days. Uh, we have very good, Leilak, Commissioner Leilak.
Well, and we had our meeting last Thursday. Then on, in the Friday paper, I saw an article that I don't normally agree with her on anything, but I did it on this one. It was a real good article of Debbie Arrington that writes the article. And she really had a lot of good ideas about this regionalism. And I'd like to have her name placed on there to see what she can present to us because it was very good article.
I think what we could do is, is when the time comes with, uh, with this passage, the mayor could, uh, present us a list of who he has invited or who will attend this meeting. Hopefully it would be at the commission meeting that month within the sixty day period. And I think it would be appropriate for all of us to look at that and maybe, uh, come to some type of agreement on that.
Thank you, um, thank you. Uh, Ms. George.
Thank you. Mr. Glover, and I, I've asked earlier, who are you planning to do this presentation? I mean, there are several groups and I assume you are only focusing on the hub.
Yes, ma'am.
You're not focusing on any of the other groups talking about regional, but, but who is actually going to have the data and present it when we gather all these people around?
I think we should start with the mayor that's been attending these meetings and is very familiar with, uh, with what's been going on at these meetings. And, uh, have a question and answer with him. I know, uh, that some of the, uh, mayors are interested in getting some answers. And I think during this period of time, if this passes, we can, uh, we can add some names to that list. And if the mayor feels that's appropriate for those folks to attend this, then I think that would be a good idea to move forward.
Okay, I just, I don't want to invite a lot of people up here and not have someone prepared to present information and tell us what's going on. I said, I know, you know, there are lots of groups that are talking. There's lots of ideas out there. As Ms. Leilak said, there's a zillion people with their idea of what regionalism should be and, you know, five different groups working toward it. You're focusing on the hub.
Yes, ma'am.
But from this group, I mean, there will be a person that will commit to give, present information to this group. I mean, you've asked, and I don't, I don't, is it out of order to ask if you're comfortable presenting? So we will know? Or is it, is, if that's out of order, I won't ask you?
Um, I'm not prepared to answer that.
Okay, because I would feel more comfortable passing a resolution knowing that somebody will come to the table and talk to us instead of us asking everybody to come up here and then not having anybody to present. And we're all just sitting here saying we need somebody to talk about it.
I think all the minds that's worked together on this, Commissioner George, and then coming up with the, with the bylaws and, and some of the, uh, other information. I think there's a lot of people that would like to have.
Let me give you a little more answer, Ms. George. Um, the reason I really can't comment on is that we have eight regional mayors who are working on this. I can't really speak for them. That's why I can't. If I come in on this, I would be speaking for my, seven of my colleagues who have worked on this over the last two years. So that's the reason I can't come in and say, am I comfortable presenting? I don't know that they would want me to present a plan that they've worked on and, and for two years. They might not choose me to present it. They might choose somebody, one of their own. So we have, we haven't organized in that way. Uh, let me turn, turn the mic on.
Then my, my question, I guess, goes to you. Do you feel that someone from that group would be willing to come to our meeting and present everything you're working on so that we would have a presentation at that meeting? Or?
I'd, I'd love to give you my feeling, but that's not fact. And, and I, uh, the feeling is that the, my seven colleagues really want to continue this and, and bring it to a conclusion and, and have that in a public way. And I think that will happen. We've, uh, there's an artificial date of Labor Day and I believe this might get us through Labor Day, Commissioner, that we've worked with consultants, uh, are going to, uh, I believe we've concluded our business with the community by that time. But I can't, I can't tell you that eight colleagues will come here to make a presentation to one body or two bodies. Uh, I think it, it might take a larger venue. But again, I can't, that's why I can't answer your question.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I wish I could.
Could I say that, that this is a very important issue for Sullivan County? And this particular issue of how it's going to affect Sullivan County and how it's going to affect the citizens of Sullivan County, I think is very important to all of us because, uh, there might be one or two in this room that probably knows exactly what a hub is. And I think this is, is, you know, we deserve an explanation. I don't want us to get, like I said the other day, in headfirst on something that none of us in here particularly know anything about. And that's more or less what this is, is a fact-finding, uh, meeting. I think it would be a successful meeting. And I think it's something that we should do once a year with the cities, whether it's about a hub or, or, or something else in the county. I think it'd be very wise to, to do communication. And I think that's the biggest, uh, the biggest ideal of this resolution is to gather all the information, if any at all that we can, and, uh, share it with everyone it's going to affect. I think sometimes we're overlooking that, uh, we work for the people and we answer to the people. And, uh, I feel like they would want to know exactly what's happening, how it's going to affect them. And, uh, I think that's what the whole purpose of this is.
Thanks, Mr. Glover. Mr. Van Truul, your.
Thanks, Mr. Jim. Uh, I guess the, the question I have about this whole thing, if you and your seven colleagues, the mayors of the Northeast Tennessee region, have, have you all even discussed about what your plans are about bringing it back to the legislative bodies of the, of the county? Have you all even discussed that, of what your plans are about bringing what the information you all been working on for two years?
I can tell you that, uh, you know, I, we've had meetings over two years and I'm, I'm sure we've talked about how our legislative bodies would be involved, uh, and when that plan would be rolled out. But there is not a proposal on the table right now. Except in the organizational meetings. And as you know, a copy of the draft bylaws were distributed by my colleagues some time ago when we took suggestions from the mayors. And that included municipal mayors. And Mayor Scholl was very active in that. Uh, Mayor Farrobin from Bristol was very active in attending the organizational meetings that were held. But as to how we would specifically roll it out, we're gonna have to have a product before we decide how we roll it out. If it's rolled, if it's rolled out, uh, we're, this, this body is still in the organizational station. Let me, I, I'd like to conclude and I'm sure the commi, the, uh, commissioner would like to get them to vote on this. And if I could just give you, uh, some benefit of what's happened before. When I was mayor in two thousand and two, we had three economic development operations in Sullivan County, Kingsport, Bristol, and Sullivan County, and three different states. Mayor, uh, Blazer and I, uh, had a meeting and decided to call, uh, invite the mayors of Bristol, I believe it was Trish Bay at the time, and Bob Thomas in Love City, to meet with us just informally to discuss how we might address that. We met for two years in the bottom of this courthouse. To try to reach an agreement on how we could effectively represent all the citizens of Sullivan County in a very equal way and what kind of organization we would need to do that. It took us two years. I can tell you if we had to, had to do that without those four participants and we had included all forty-some elected officials in Sullivan County, that would not have happened. The mayors have a different obligation and authority than our legislative bodies do. The legislative bodies consider proposals, originate your own proposals. And, uh, but the mayors have a constitutional authority or a ordinance authority to do things that are in the interest of people who are elected and then bring them to the legislative bodies to discuss if it involves them. So, uh, I, I don't want to belabor the point, but, uh, I mentioned that we've met for two years and these mayors that have met for two years represent over a half million people and probably over three hundred and fifty elected officials. We have not discussed how we would roll that out other than, um, there has been a, a suggestion by our consultant that a summit be held when we have a product or have a proposal. So that, that's where we are.
Well, let me, I'm not gonna sit here and debate and discuss this.
No, no, no. I, I'm giving you information. I'm not going to debate you, Mr. Vance.
Well, I mean, we are elected by the people of this county. And they expect us to stay informed and take out the information that's anything pertaining to this county. And I take that job serious and I think everyone is really taking that job serious. So we do feel like that we have an obligation. And I think we have to look up to our leaders to keep us abreast and keep us informed of issues, uh, of, of something of the magnitude of regionalism. When you ju, when you identify the definition of regionalism, it's where groups of people come together on the same common goal and the direction of doing the same thing. So when you alienate three hundred and fifty elected officials, uh, not knowing what's going on, I don't see that's a form of regionalism.
I don't, Mr. Vance, I, as I said, I told you I'm not going to debate you, but I think if you characterize our actions on behalf of the people that we represent, that, that it's alienating those people, I think you're wrong and I'm not gonna let you get away with that.
Well, would you explain that?
Let me say this, and I, and this is gonna be my last to comment on this. Commissioners who have called me and asked me to bring them up to date on what some of the activities that I could share with them, I have shared with them. So I'm gonna leave it at that. And if any individual commissioner wanted to call me, I'll be happy to share with you what I can. It's not proprietary to our consultant. That's the last word I have. Uh, Mr. Glover, you want to renew your motion?
Mr. Ackert has a question.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't see.
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, one of the reasons we sponsored this is, uh, because I think a lot of singular conversations are going around, um, and, and Commissioner Vance just spoke that, you know, we get a lot of questions about this. So there was a meeting last night. And I'm gonna read directly from the email that the First Tennessee Development District sent out today. Really excited about the meeting last night. During the course of the meeting, the board also affirmed the executive committee's motion to endorse the creation of a regional hub and fully endorse the working relationship between the FTDV and the hub after it is established. While the framework and duties for this new organization are being formalized with stakeholders across the region, the First Tennessee Development District remains committed to its core mission, regional progress through regional cooperation. I'm pretty sure we're a stakeholder in that and I know zero about it and everything. So there are a lot of conversations going on. And that's why I fully support this, uh, resolution. I'm proud to support it. And we need to be, if we're gonna be called stakeholders, we should have the information going along on this.
Thank you, Mr. Ackert. Mr. Glover, your direction.
Mayor, again, I'd, I'd like to say, uh, Commissioner Ackert and Commissioner Vance, uh, their comments, they run deep with me also. We represent one of the fastest-growing areas in Sullivan County right now, Commissioner King and I do, and it's Pine Flats in Love City. And I, I don't, I don't want to be at a, a gas station or a convenience store or a grocery store. And some of these folks asked me a question about this and I looked at it and say, I don't know. That's not the right answer to give to people that voted for you, is I don't know. And, uh, that's something right now that's, that's the truth. We don't know. So like I said, this is a fact-finding mission and, uh, that's, that's what we're, what we're after so we can share this information. If, if this is so good and it's so great, how come none of us know anything about it? So, I mean, that's, that's what we need. So I'll leave it at that and, uh, I hope everybody read the book.
I believe, um, Ms. Stanley actually, uh, Mr. Glover wants to be recognized. Ms. Stanley?
Thank you, Chairman. Um, I'd like more. I've, I've had a lot of questions from people in my area and some people that are business owners and wanting to know about the regionalism and stuff. And when you tell them that you don't know nothing and you're an elected official, you're there to represent your people and you know nothing. I mean, it's, first of all, it's embarrassing whenever you go and you tell them that. And... And, you know, we were elected to represent our people and they expect us to share information and stuff that we learn on this whenever it's affecting our county. And, you know, we can't say if we're against it. We can't say we're for it because we don't know nothing. This could be one of the best things that ever happened to us here and then vote against it because we didn't know nothing, or vice versa. And I just feel like that we need, as a governing body here, we need to be brought up to date on some of the things that are happening. I'm not talking about predicting the future or nothing. I'm saying just bring us up to date on what things have been going on so far.
Chairman, you use his motion for introduction and immediate introduction and adoption to lay the rule for immediate introduction and adoption of item number twelve and is properly second by a number of folks who has recorded on the resolution. And so, as we have any further discussion, I'm going to make one final comment before you vote. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm not going to bring you a half-baked cake. And that's what I would bring you right now, is a half-baked cake. The board hopes to cast your vote on item number twelve. Has everyone voted? Anyone wish to change their vote? None? Take the vote.
Twenty-two yes, one no, one absent.
Thank you. Having received necessary majority, item number twelve is passed. I would like to make a comment that I did make during the debate. Mr. Glover said there wasn't any direction for the county mayors to do anything in this. And if I read it properly, it says, be a further result, South County Mayor Richard Bingle shall set time, date, and agenda for the Senate. Moving on to item number thirteen. Ms. Crossway, you're recognized on item number thirteen. If I can get your microphone turned on.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
That comment that you just made, that you shall be on behalf of this regarding this regional hub for this meeting, could you explain to me in detail what that means?
I believe you said that I was not being required to do anything about this resolution. Did you, you said that earlier on in your presentation. And if I have misheard that, I would apologize, but I believe the record will show that you said I would not be required to do anything on this. And just reading through it, I saw the word "shall" and that's the reason I brought it up.
Are you talking about the amendment that was added to it?
No, I'm talking about the, talking about the now therefore be resolved and then the sentence starting and be a further resolved. South County Mayor Richard Bingle shall set time, date, etc. That's what I was pointing out.
Within the sixty-day time frame?
I may be confused if you told me, you said before that I wouldn't be required by this resolution to do anything. And I believe you just told me to do it, so that's my explanation.
Yes, we are counting on you to do it, yes, sir.
Well, you're instructed.
I wanted to clarify that.
You're instructed me to do it, contrary to what's remarked for. Okay, thank you, Mr. Glover. Commissioner Crossway, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chairman. I won't read the top part of this resolution because I think Ms. Hennet pretty well explained everything. But what it boils down to, we want to go ahead and hire an architect firm such as Can Rush and West because we need to analyze the space that we're going to need for these current records. And I hope all of you understand the importance of archival records and just general records. We're required by law to keep them. If we can be sued by the county, we could be sued because we're not keeping up the records properly. And there's a lot of records I know that need to be gone through and follow the retention schedule. So that's why we've got to go ahead and get this started. But the bottom is, now therefore it needs to solve it for the Southern County Commissioners. Samuel in Recore Session, I'm not going to read all that, to make my current and future record needs, said house not to exceed thirty-seven thousand dollars. And I would like for this to go on right now.
Ms. Crossway moves immediate introduction and adoption of item number thirteen, seconded by Commissioner Blaylock. We have a list of folks that want to talk here. Ms. Stornes, you're recognized.
Can I be in it as a co-sponsor, please?
Without objection. Mr. Cross, you're recognized, will be added to co-sponsor.
Vote again to affirm.
Mr. Ackert, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chairman. All I was going to say is, spending this money in architecture and all that, which after Ms. Hennet, I mean, I totally agree with that. But I know Larry, Sam, myself, Larry Bailey, we're at the, sorry about that. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can.
We're at the meeting today talking about the American Recovery Plan. And there was a lot of talk about using the money for some building development and stuff. So I'll be honest with you, my notes are in my car, I forgot. So I totally agree with this and thirty-seven thousand, you know, it's not that big a money. But we have a really good opportunity to do some good work in this county for the future based on some building infrastructure. I think, you know, that was the biggest thing I got out of that meeting today, was about infrastructure and some stuff. And so let's think about these things. I mean, I'm going to vote for this because it's not that whole lot of money. But my first thought was when Ms. Hennet was giving her presentation, we bought a blank piece of land and we don't even know how big a building's supposed to go on it.
Excuse me, that's what this ground's going to be.
But what about, the building's bigger than the piece of land? I mean, so I'm just saying, let's think about these things as we have a lot of money coming into the, from the American Recovery, that's one-time money, so understand that. Whatever we build, whatever we do, we will have to pay for going forward and make sure we understand that. And I don't even know if this would fall under that, but I'm just saying, as we're looking at buildings and stuff, we need to really focus on, you know, yeah, so thank you.
Buildings have more than one floor, so we could go up if we needed to. But please just understand the importance of these records. I mean, it will come back eventually, I'm surprised they haven't already gotten this. So we need to take care of it.
Commissioner Vance?
I just have one recommendation. As for the funds, thirty-seven thousand dollars to be from unappropriate funds, the archive fees that we collect each year has considerable amount of money. Do they be taken out of that account?
Go with that to Mr. Bailey, whatever he decides.
Okay, that's my recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner King, you're recognized.
Yeah, I have an amendment that comes from the archive money that they already put.
I'll save it.
I'll save it.
Is the money Larry?
Larry, look better a few minutes.
We're having a conversation that I'm not sure is being recorded. I think Mr. Vance had, I would accept that as amendment, Mr. Vance. I would identify as amendment that you're suggesting that this be funded through the archive. Is that the way you'd like it?
That's correct, that the archive fee that they have, they have several hundred thousand dollars and just take it out of that account instead of unfunded appropriations, unappropriated, unfunded, unappropriated funds, just take it out of the archive fee. That way you'll track all your expenditures for that whole project.
I'll address that, thank you, Mark.
Okay, now we've got Mr. King and then Mr. Jones. Mr. King, you're recognized.
Well, Mark, you kind of got my, stole my thunder there. That's what I was going to suggest, you know, we have, we've got the funds, why not do it? But moving on. Have you already hired a architect, engineer? Does that have to go out for bids? Do we have to do bids, three bids?
Yes, yes, sir. We, this group has already been working through and trying to help us. So we have a little bit of a bid.
Okay.
Yeah, I think they were going to take that, Mr. Jones. Commissioner Jones, you're recognized.
Well, I think that's along the same lines. Did this go to the building committee? How did you come up with a thirty-seven thousand dollar? Where'd that number come from?
We have, we might ask Ms. Hennet to come back up again, but we've been working with this Can Rush and West and they haven't charged us anything, so.
So the question is, where did you come up not to exceed that amount? How did thirty-seven thousand arise?
At a meeting, they were there, we had an architect there, we had another gentleman. That was kind of, that was kind of like a rule of thumb unless Ms. Hennet has something else she'd like to add to it.
Sheila, would you go ahead and come up to it?
It didn't go before the building committee, is that right?
No, they got canceled. They wanted those people to show up for the building committee, so they got canceled.
Oh, so, so.
I think we're in support of it, but didn't have enough people to meet him yesterday. But we already, we approved buying the land, building approved buying the land. So we're on target with this project.
Okay.
There will be, and maybe this is a good time to announce there will be a building committee meeting Wednesday, June twenty-third, three P.M. Because we didn't have enough today. Sheila, would you like to take us how you got through this? And I might add that these are professional services. This group is going to check with Chris Davis to make sure whether it's needed to be, go out to bid or not before any contract. So Sheila, you will take us through.
In 2019, when the Public Records Commission took a look at our records and tried to ascertain where we need to go with this, Judge Moody recommended that we meet with a couple of professional groups, one of those being TCI Group and another being Can Rush West. And so we have met with them, not on a formal authorized basis, but they have done some preliminary work, a lot of preliminary work insofar as drawings and that kind of thing. We need a better, but at any rate, that's how we got there. And Can Rush West suggests that it would be approximately thirty-six thousand dollars for them to do this study. This study's very extensive, it will take a couple of months. And they, along with myself, will be going into each of the departments to see what kind of records that we need to archive. So that's how we came up with thirty-six thousand.
Okay, Mr. Jones, first question. Mr. Glover, you're recognized.
Sheila, a question I've got for you. Have you looked, I know that you've said in the past that the state kind of requires a layout design of a building like this.
That's correct.
Have you looked at any other building designs across the state that's already in place that have any ideals or spin-off from those of what this building would look at?
And in fact, we have collected over the years building design plans from other archives that have been successful and seen what they have done. In 2004, let me preface that by saying, in 2004, the Tennessee State Library and Archives put out a mandate, not a mandate, but an advisory saying what we, what most counties would need. And for a mid-sized county, they recommended, you've probably heard me say, nineteen thousand square feet. And of course, Sullivan County is a large county, so we're probably looking at somewhere between twenty-five, thirty-five thousand square feet. I don't know, but that's the whole purpose of employing Can Rush West or another architectural firm to help us ascertain what we actually need. They have done a footprint on that lot that you all purchased and they've done several different footprints. And I think the thing is, the only concern that we have is ensuring that we have enough parking space for people who come to visit the archives. That's the critical issue, so we may have to go up with it. I hope I answered your question.
We were supposed to have a building committee meeting near Tuesday. Like the mayor said, I don't think the judge could attend it, but kind of look forward to seeing those plans and see where we're at within that timeframe.
Sure.
And get a cost on that. So the buildings that you've looked at across the state, where is one of the newest ones that's been built? Maybe where we can pull it up and take a look at it and maybe get a layout of it.
As of two years ago, I would have said Montgomery County, but I'm really not sure at this point because I haven't kept up with it in the last two years. But Montgomery County was the forerunner of all the archives across the state. And of course, Washington County, Tennessee, had an old building, a large building that they used and are doing very well with that. So there are certain rooms that you need in an archives. Again, this is a little bit premature, but you tend to think, when you think archives and archives storage for its records, you tend to think one big happy building. But there has to be certain rooms within that building laid out by an architect for certain purposes. And one of those being, for example, a desidification room, another being an isolation room where we isolate those records that you saw pictures of, isolate those from the other records so that everything doesn't become contaminated. So that's where we need this architectural services. That's why we need that.
Thank you.
Shirley.
Thank you, Mr. Glover. Mr. Vance, who is chairman of the building committee, by the way. Mark, you're recognized.
Thank you very much. I'm in support of this resolution, but the building committee normally is when there's a special need for a project of a structure, is the people that's going to use that building basically becomes involved in how the structure is going to build. This building is going to have special needs for ventilation and storage and all that stuff. So what will happen will, if this resolution passes, they'll go back and design a building with the specification that meets their need. Then it'll come back to the building committee to approve. I don't think the building committee has the expertise to design a structure like that. So it will be coming back to the building committee. And at that same time, they'll have to come back to figure out the funding source, how you're going to pay this building. This building may be three to five million dollars. So this is just basically giving permission for the architects to design the spec building that they want to use. So there's really not anything the building committee can vote on right now. Yesterday, Judge Moody was supposed to be there talking about the need and the purpose and identifying the need and so forth. He wasn't able to be at that meeting, so this isn't premature. This is not circumventing the situation. It's basically when the building committee voted to purchase the land, the presentation gives us then that that was a future desire to build this archive building. So, and then when we came back and appropriated that money to spend buy that property, that pretty well sets on a course that we have some interest in moving in that direction. So I just wanted to explain that to you to not feel like somebody's trying to circumvent the commission or the building committee.
Thank you, Mr. Vance. Mr. King, you're recognized.
Thanks, thank you. Hiring an architect does not have to go through the bid process. They're a professional service, so they do not. But I'd still like to suggest that you could get maybe three people to give you a proposal on the design and, you know, trying to help you get along with this building.
We can do that. And in answer to your question, this two months, this two-month study for the thirty-six thousand dollars, that involves studying all of the records and, you know, what the size of the building would be. And they won't actually do any design work until after that phase is completed.
Right. But, yeah, and again, nothing against Can Rush and, you know, West, but, you know, they've been doing a lot of stuff in Sullivan County. You know, it's like we need to spread it around a little bit.
I'd be happy to mention that.
Other people have a chance at it. And Mr.?
Mr. Crossway?
Sheila, these, you said that you've visited some other sites with archives and everything. Are most of those footprints you've looked at, are they a single level or have some of them gone to a multi-level?
They do vary. Some are multi-level, but I think most, they try to get everything on one level because if you don't, then you have to put in, you know, an elevator. And done later certainly doesn't work, you know, where you just tote the records back and forth. So they do try to get it on one level. So, they do try to get it on one level.
Okay. King, Mr. Jones, you're recognized.
Commissioner Crossway, in your now therefore be resolved, there's a, it just started, authorizes the purchasing agent to negotiate fees and then it's kind of a standard block of language with a from, qualified architectural firm. Is there some clarification on that wording? Need to be there. We, we just say, with, with a qualified, uh.
Well, we thought, wishes to hire a qualified architect and construction firm such as, is that the section we talked about?
No, no, down in the bold print, you've got a.
You're leaving from out.
From, okay, you should take the from.
Okay, so you wanna amend that and take that word out?
Sure, why not?
Well.
Without objection.
Somebody might reach out and do.
I didn't know from was such a big word, but I'll take it out, so.
I'll catch it. Accept it. I have other questions, uh, for the sponsor. Um, Ms. Hunt, while you're up here, and, and I, I think we need to go back to the reasons for the resolution because we got off on architects and architecture. Uh, I don't believe that we're retaining an architect to design a building. Is it true that the, it is a evaluation of the storage needs of Sullivan County?
That's correct. You are correct.
And so, I, I want to make that clear, you're not voting on an architect because we go to the building committee with that type of proposal. This is the study, the actual square foot and volume.
That's correct.
That you need. Okay, I just want to make clear.
And the size of the building there would come in the next phase.
Let everybody clear on that. Okay, I, I see the board's empty, it looks like we've talked about this one for a good while and, and we've defined from, which is a good thing too. So, we're ready to vote. And board opens, cast your vote. Uh, and, uh, Ms. Crossway has a request. I believe, uh, as I said before, introduction and approval requires sixteen votes. Has everyone voted? Anyone wish to change your vote? Madam Clerk, would you take a vote?
Twenty-three yes, one abstain.
Have received necessary majority. I don't know whether to adopt them. Uh, next up is, is. Mr. Vance?
Well, this is resolution to bail Hunter, uh, I said, resolution to be.
He didn't hear you, do that one more time.
No crossing, Mark, no crossing. I said this is resolution to bail Hunter out. Uh, resolution to be in the county coroner medical examiner's budget. But anyway, it's to basically, uh, to fund additional funds to the, uh, the coroner and medical examiner's fees to get through the rest of this budget year in amount of ninety thousand dollars, which will be offset and received through post-mortem examination program reimbursed by the state. So, this is basically appropriating funds that we're gonna recover from reimbursement from the state of Tennessee so that he can finish his budget out in the positive this year and he don't be a knod of a bird.
Uh, Mr. Vance moves immediate introduction and adoption, second vote to Mr. Gardner. You've heard the explanation, uh, uh, any discussion, questions? Questioner Hutton, you're recognized.
I just have one, I just one question, does this, this amend the budget for next year or is it just going out this year?
No, it's just menning to this year.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Hutton. Uh, any other questions?
It's all, it's all in terms on how many bodies they have and they've gone over this year, so next year they may not need this allocation.
As, without stepping out of the chair, we've had about three hundred additional deaths in Sullivan County this year, so it's kind of where we are. You've heard the, uh, motion, uh, board's clear, I believe we're ready to vote. When, when board opens, cast your vote on item number four-ten. Has everyone voted? Anyone wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Twenty-two yes, one abstain, one abstain.
Have received necessary majority, item fourteen is adopted as presented. Next up, Mr. King on item fifteen. Uh, this is the start of our adopting the budget for Sullivan County this year, and this is the first resolution that we normally pass. We pass three resolutions on the first reading, um, and then move on to the next step in budget preparation and, uh, Mr. King, I believe you've agreed, sponsor of item fifteen, fixing the tax limit for Sullivan County department we are. So, uh, Mr. Street has requested, uh, recognize Mr. Street.
Mr. Chairman, I, I just have to say, I don't think if we stick to our vote, of course, it could pass on first reading, but I don't think if we stick to our vote that a resolution has to be read on two readings, that we can consider a resolution with a rate of zero as first reading. I don't think that's gonna work.
I, I believe, uh, and, and there's something we could discuss off those.
I, I just wanted to mention that because I, somebody could challenge that. I mean, that is no resolution to say the tax rate is zero. I, I'll say my fees can be quiet, but I mean, it only makes sense if that's not worthwhile.
Is there, um, I believe if I recall correctly, excuse me, so. The footnote on the federal tax rate to be established upon receiving certified tax rate of the state of Tennessee. I, I would rule that, uh, that it is a proper resolution and can be, can be and will be amended on the second reading. You mentioned something then, uh, our rule requiring two readings, uh, could you kind of expand on that portion? I, because I don't know.
Yes, that's all I'm talking about. I'm not saying this resolution can't be amended, it very clearly can be, any resolution can be amended. But what I'm saying is, we have a rule that no resolution can be considered on first reading, so I assume the reason this, the resolution is being introduced today is to qualify as first reading. However, to me, I think I'd be hard pressed to convince the judge that a resolution that sets the tax rate zero is first reading. I mean, that just, I just don't think I could do that.
Okay, thank you for your opinion. Um, and with that, uh, we've been here for a while, so let, uh, let me confirm with Mr. Bailey and Mr. Street and, and we'll come back to this. Uh, I've got a list of people that want to talk on it, but let's, let's make sure that we satisfy, that we bring your resolution to satisfy the legal terms. So, let's, uh, have, so, seven thirty-four, let's see if we can resolve this by about five minutes to eight, so if we back in at five minutes of eight, uh, we'll go ahead with the three budget.